Good evening. I would like to call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:06 PM on December 12th, 2024. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Are there any corrections to the agenda? If no, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Ms. Feather is not in attendance this evening. The student government report. Student government activities report, please.
This past month of student government was highlighted by our annually successful filler truck food drive, collecting canned goods in each A4 class and spending the Sunday before Thanksgiving at the Alba Stuffing, our box truck. We donated over $4,000 worth of food to the Happy Baskets program spearheaded by John Johnson. This was a CHS student government record.
This current month, we have moved on to the Adopt a Family fundraiser. We've been collecting gifts for children whose families cannot afford them. This helps make everyone have the wonderful holiday experience we know and love in our community. So this upcoming Monday, we will be holding our annual Student Government Scavenger Hunt and Christmas party, which includes wrapping all the gifts that were donated for this Adopt a Family fundraiser. As always, thank you for your time, enjoy your holiday, and we will see you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your good work. We truly appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Consent agenda. Approval of minutes, the regular meeting 11:14, 2024. Special joint minutes, 11:18, 2024. Organizational meeting minutes, 12:03, 2024. Approval of minutes for executive session, 11:14, 2024. School bus inspection reports, 11:07, 24. And 11:29, 2024. The enrollment report, transportation report, and residency truancy report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Goldstein.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Personnel announcements. Ms. Resick?
Hi, good evening. Tonight, we have three appointments, all effective on November 18th, 2024. Amanda Andrade, Grade 2 Garvin, one year only. Abby Crosby, Grade 3 Community, one year only. And Antonio Soares, Custodian Knights at Cumberland High School. We have one resignation, effective January 5th, 2025. Lauren Messier, Math, Grade 8 at McCourt. And we have two unpaid personal leaves of absence. The first one effective January 1st through the end of the year is Farrah Garnum, paraprofessional at BF Norton. And the second, effective December 9th, 2024, through the end of the school year, Charlene Mitchell, Grade 1 Ashton. I have also submitted coaching appointments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Reporter of the executive session meeting. Reporter of the executive session meeting on 12/12/2024. Reporter of executive session votes. Vote to seal minutes of the executive session. The committee did not take any votes in executive session. Can I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
Motion to seal.
Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Mr. Bacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries six to zero. Dr. Thornton, superintendent's report, please.
Well, good evening. First up, I have the pleasure of announcing one retirement, Ms. Kathleen Scanlon, 12 years in the business office. She's the person that keeps the trains running on time, keeps everyone paid, indispensable, good humor, just a real outstanding person. So Kathleen, please come up while Tim McGrath talks about you. We're going to say a few words about you. Please come up.
In every successful business office, there exists a hidden gem, an unsung hero who silently weaves a thread that holds an organization together. An accountant not driven by ambition for personal glory but fueled by the unwavering commitment to important work of making sure payroll is processed and balance sheets accounts are reconciled. Tonight, we celebrate Kathy for her 12 years of service to the Cumberland School Department. Kathy stands as a pillar of reliability. Day in, day out, she diligently works to ensure that every employee's pay is delivered on time and all the cash accounts tied out, and every student's lunch account is accurate, just to name a few. With her meticulous attention to detail, Kathy has helped to instill trust and confidence among colleagues. While she does not seek recognition, her actions speak volumes, silently securing the financial well-being of the entire organization. Working in the business office comes with its own set of challenges, from answering the many questions from myself and others, to handling difficult situations with employees and parents of students. You always handle them in class. It's not just her technical acumen that sets Kathy apart, it's the warm, friendly demeanor that endears her every day. In often stressful, numbers-driven environment, the best accountants greet colleagues with an approachable style. So for those reasons, indeed Kathy, for the last 12 years, you were the rock in which the Cumberland School Department Business Office has been built. Without her commitment to accuracy and reliability, the foundation would be shaky. So while I may have only been director for one out of your 12 years, I thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for your service to the Cumberland School Department.
This is for you.
Thank you very much.
Kathy does get the beach bag, so very exciting.
This will get lots of views.
Next up, I can call up Ms. Jen Fisher from the CSV board to introduce our new CSV director.
My name is Jen Fisher, and I'm the president of the Cumberland School Volunteers Board. And tonight, I'm here to introduce our new director, Cindy Thorson. Cindy has been a volunteer since 2004, when her son was in fourth grade at the Cumberland Hill Elementary School. He's now 29. In 2007, Cindy joined the Cumberland School Volunteer Board, where her organization skills and dedication to quickly made her a valuable asset. From 2009 to 2021, Cindy trained volunteers for the Just Friends More-Alike Than Different Program, ensuring the program's success and creating a lasting impact on countless students. Cindy is now overseeing both Just Friends Program and the Reading is Fundamental initiative, along with continuing to find support for their organization's programs. A lot of work she's got ahead of her. This past fall, Cindy brought back Just Friends Program to four out of the five elementary schools' fourth-grade classrooms. It was well-received by the students, the teachers, and even the parents. Community school is scheduled for January, and Cindy will talk more about that. And last week, community school children, grades K through 5, received over 500 free books through the Reading is Fundamental Program. That was the first initiative of RIF so far, and all the other schools will also participate in that. So please join me and us and the whole group of the Cumberland School Board in congratulating Cindy on this new role, a role she definitely deserves, and supporting her in her journey ahead. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much, especially to Jen and to the Board of Directors, who have been so enthusiastic about having me roll into the role of Director of the Cumberland School Volunteers. The mission of the volunteer program is to do just that. It's to promote volunteer programs in our school, and our volunteers come from all kinds of walks of life, parents of students, grandparents of students, friends of the Cumberland community, retired teachers, nurses. We've had so many different people, but they're people who love to be in the school with our kids. And this year, we're excited to extend the volunteer possibilities to our high school juniors and seniors, who will be earning some of their service learning hours by helping to present the Just Friends Program to the community school kids who are in high school this year. It was just a perfect setup for them to be able to come right from school, right into the elementary school, and to help us to present those programs. So that's why I haven't done the community school kids yet, but they're going to get in in January and February. So we're very excited about that. And then, so the Reading is Fundamental Program is a national program that brings books to all the students in Cumberland. We actually go into three of the schools three times, so for a total of about 4,800 books will be distributed between now and June. So we're very excited about that, including the preschool. These books are purchased through grants and donations and contributions from the town of Cumberland, so we're all very indebted to the town for helping us to provide those books. And then the Just Friends Program is near and dear to my heart. I was the coordinator for 10 years before COVID hit, stupid COVID, I call it, and we were not allowed in the schools anymore. So when that happened for four years, there was a vacancy. When I retired from nursing at Women and Infants this past June, I was determined to get the program back and up and going again. So we got it going, and with the support of the superintendent's office, we were able to get all of the teachers on board and the principals in the elementary schools. So we have just tomorrow finish with four schools. We teach a, it's a disability awareness program, and we present blindness and deafness, physical and intellectual disabilities, learning differences, and autism. And it's activity-based, the kids just really enjoy having us, and we become the Just Friends lady. And then finally, the Community Service Learning Award is given at the end of the school year to a high school senior, so that's another thing that we promote through the Cumberland School Volunteers. So, a lot going on, but very exciting, and very, very excited to be in this role. So thank you all for your support.
Thank you for all you do. We truly appreciate it.
All right, Mike, moving on. You may have watched the news earlier this week. I was with Mike Chandler, our tech director, at an event sponsored by the White House and the governor's office. It was a statewide cybersecurity event. They're really promoting something called PDNS, Protective Domain Name Service, in layman's terms, kind of like a moat around your district cyber-wise. And I can tell you Cumberland already has PDNS in place, but we're still working on other security measures. Our real focus does remain with what's called the end user training, all the folks that see emails every day and go on the web, but it's a never-ending pursuit, but it was nice to see the whole state together talking about cybersecurity. Thank you, Mike. For the committee, or our new committee, is to give you a kind of a one-slide snapshot of construction right now that's kind of happening now or gonna happen. As you know, Community is in the middle of the renovation, the new addition a couple years ago. Now we're doing the final whole building renovation. BF Norton, new construction, shovel on the ground. I think it's this June, I believe. Is that right, Mike? I think we're on June still. Then we have playgrounds. The batting orders, Cumberland Hill, Garvin, and Ashton, all already budgeted, ready to go. I think spring is the first one. Science labs at both middle schools are on tap for the summer. The high school roof has 13 sections, some in more disrepair than others, all quite old. The worst two sections being done first, the recent rain certainly illustrated that. The worst sections are by the guidance entrance and also by the wellness center in the front. So that's all underway. And also this summer, the transitional building, this building, gets more work done, some more small bathrooms for the preschool, and some more work on the second floor of what we call the donut upstairs. So all of that is in play right now. Mike? And last but not least, some pictures of Community. Right now, you're seeing a lot of framing, you're seeing us pulling wires, and that's just some of the framing you're seeing in the various classrooms. Next one, Mike. Here on the left, that was the old cafeteria at Community back in the day when it was in the basement. Picture that room. And also with the recent rain, we really could illustrate the probably 20-years-old leaking problem in Community's basement. So we're looking at that now with experts, trying to figure out how we can, once and for all, fix the water that's coming in the basement of Community. So that's an ongoing challenge. Pulling a lot of wires through the whole building on the upper right there. Painting, they're already painting most of the area. I'm told they're on schedule, they're on time, and we're just a hair over budget, which will be adjusted, I believe, next week, so we're on budget. So it's all looking quite good at Community. And that brings us to the main event. Without further ado, it's my pleasure, we each year have Mr. Demana and his team talk about RICAS scores. That's what we do, right? Students and student proficiency. So Tony, if you could take it away and talk to the committee about RICAS.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the committee. Congratulations on your recent appointment to the school committee. For those of us that haven't met yet, my name is Antonio Demana. I've served the district as the Assistant Superintendent for the past 10 years, well, actually, I'm in year 10 right now, but 14 total in the district. I started out at BF Norton Elementary School before I came up to central office. I'm also joined by two of my colleagues, very talented colleagues. To my left, I have Kathy Cardoza, who is our K-8 Math and Science Coordinator. She's served the district for 35 years and nine years with me. Then we have Bethany Silva, who, she was at BF Norton with me 14 years ago and has served in several of our schools and is now our K-8 ELA and Social Studies Coordinator. And she's been in the district 19 years, and this is her fourth year in my office. Also in attendance, we have our MLL Coordinator behind me, Gillian Belanger. Okay, so, Mike, try to contain your enthusiasm as we go through this. So as Dr. Thornton mentioned, this is what we do. So our office, we focus on many things, but primarily, you know, we're here to ensure that students get the highest level of education that they can get, and we want to pursue proficiency for all students. The least we could do for our kids is to help them try to meet grade-level standards. And so we do that by strategically looking at data and trying to be as responsive as we can and to provide action plans, along with and in combination with our administrators and our teachers. And we do that by making sure that our curriculum and our assessment and instructional system is operating, you know, as well as it can be. Next slide, Mike? Okay, so, some of you are new to this. Just really quickly, the scale for which RICAS measures students on ranges from 440 to 560. 440 to 470, that range are basically students who are not meeting expectations, that would be a level one. Partially meeting expectations, those students are approaching, meeting grade-level expectations, and those scores are between 470 and 499. At 500, 500 is the cut score for where we determine proficiency for students, or we consider them meeting grade-level expectations. And from 530 and above, that would be considered, they call it exceeding expectations, but if you look at the finer print, it's really mastery of standards, they're not really exceeding standards. They're demonstrating mastery of that grade-level content, and that would be considered a four. So, Dr. Thornton wanted me to just explain scale scores a little bit more deeply, because it is some of your first exposure to this. And really, as simply as I can put it is, is scale scores are a way to measure the strength of a student's aptitude. It's a very specific standardized way of assigning a number to measure how students are performing on grade-level standards. And so what I did was, I took a random sampling, you see I have six districts up there. And so, on average, basically what you're seeing is, is when you take 2,127 students in Cumberland, and you look at their math scale scores and their ELA scale scores, on average, Cumberland students are meeting grade-level expectations. That's what that is telling us, right? So South Kingstown, Johnson, Barrington, Lincoln in one socket, you can see, based on those measures, if you cross-reference them with the scales that we showed previously, you would see how, on average, those districts are performing according to the Common Core.
I'll go to the next slide. Good evening. I'm going to take a look at the math data, and over this first slide talks about our math journey since 2015. So if you look at 2015, we were below 40% of our students showing proficiency, and we kept climbing up until, you can see, 2019, and then we had COVID. COVID, we took a dip, and then you can see since then, we've grown. In 2022, we were 53.2% proficient. 2023, we were 57.5%, and this year, we were 56.2%. So this slide reflects the number of students that were proficient on RICAS from 2015, and like I said, we dipped and then slowly climbed. We did dip a little bit this year, but if you look at the percentages, there's only a difference of 1.3 percentage points. So this slide shows just this year. So if you look at this year, the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations of all of the LEAs across the state, this would be the ranking. And Cumberland ranks sixth. So you can see Little Compton, Jamestown, East Greenwich, Barrington, North Smithfield. The next slide, you'll see that North Smithfield in Cumberland, yes.
Can you talk about how the size of the sample affects this?
That slide is coming up.
Thank you.
Not the next slide, but the slide after. And again, this just includes our LEAs, not charter schools. And you can see, and we'll talk about that, the number of students tested, which is important in the right-hand column. You can see Little Compton tests 139 students, which is roughly 23 per grade level, but we'll talk more about that on another slide. So this now looks at the district rankings from 2015 to 2024. And you can see the first three years, we were kind of in a different bracket, and then 2018 and 19 started climbing, pandemic hit, and then since then, we increased. Again, this year and last year, you can see it's the same exact districts in the top six, except Cumberland and North Smithfield, other districts also flip-flopped, but Cumberland and North Smithfield, who are very, very close typically, flip-flopped from 2023 to 2024. And then what Dr. Thornton was talking about is the size. So this looks at all the districts that test over 1,000 students. Again, you could see a couple of the other districts that outperformed Cumberland are Little Compton, Jamestown, and North Smithfield. Little Compton tests 139 students, North Smithfield 696, and Jamestown 266. So they're much smaller, and if you look at this, it shows the larger districts. And if you look at the larger districts, Cumberland's ranked number three. And if you look at number one and two, which we don't talk about too much in this slide, but the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged is single digits, whereas Cumberland, North Kingstown, South Kingstown, Smithfield, Charahoe, Lincoln are all between 18 and 24%. So Cumberland's really performing well compared to other districts in the state. We test about 355 students per grade level.
So we analyze our ELA data in a similar lens as we do our math data. So you'll see very similar slides, but with our ELA data. So here's our ELA journey over time. Similarly to math, we started out pretty low in 2016, and then we steadily grew and then dropped a little bit post-pandemic. We do consider 2021, we've been talking a lot, as that's our new baseline year, because that is the year that we emerged from the pandemic. And our data over the past four years has relatively been stable in ELA. We've been hovering around 51.5%. We did have a slight uptick in 2023. Although stability is positive, you know, there is still opportunity for growth and for improvement in ELA, and we'll talk a little bit about that. As you saw with the math slides, we look at data through many different lenses in order to glean as much information as possible, so that we can see what we're doing well and what we need to work on. So in ELA, we rank among the top 10 for proficiency on the RICAS ELA assessments. This slide also offers perspective on the number of students tested in grades 3 through 8, as well as our economically disadvantaged students compared to other top-ranking towns. And if you can see, we have, we test more students than any other top-ranking town. So here's our district ranking over time. We've remained in the top 10 over the past three years. I did discover in 2021, even though here it says 11, we kind of technically ranked top 10, because there were two districts that tied for proficiency. So if you wanted to put them together, we would boost up to top 10. As Kathy mentioned, in math, we kind of go back and forth between North Smithfield in ranking. We do so the same in ELA. We're kind of neck and neck and go back and forth between North Kingstown and North Smithfield in ELA. We trailed North Kingstown by 2% and North Smithfield by 1.3% in 2022. They trailed us by 1% last in 2023, and then we're trailing them by 3.9, and North Kingstown by 0.2% this year. It is interesting to note, as I was taking a look at this data, and I made a comment to Tony, how, looking at the top 10 districts, we all followed a similar pattern in '22, '23, and '24. So we all had a slight uptick in 2023, and then we lost a little bit of ground in 2022. So it was interesting to note that we all followed a similar pattern in our data. So here we have the district ranking, districts ranking or testing 1,000 or more students. Again, it offers perspective on how Cumberland fares compared to districts testing a large population of students. And we do this because, generally speaking, districts that have a larger population of students, we generally face greater challenges than those districts that test or have a smaller population of students. For example, there's more schools, there's more principals, there's more teachers. So ensuring consistent instruction can be a little bit of a struggle. Sometimes the synergy is a little bit off. Also, there's a wider range of student need when you have more students.
So as Bethany said, we look at the data through many different lenses. We looked at it district-wide, and now this goes and looks at it by grade level. So this slide shows how we performed in grade 3, 4, and 5. And it also is interesting why we highlighted those other towns, is because in general, they outperform Cumberland if you look at the district as a whole. But in grade 3, we performed better than Barrington. Grade 4, better than Barrington, North Smithfield, Jamestown. And grade 5, better than East Greenwich. So it's pretty consistent with how we perform as a district. They're relatively in the same spot, which, you know, is a positive thing, I think, that our curriculum is effective across the grade levels. We did perform 61% proficient in grade 3, 66% proficient in grade 4, and 55% proficient in grade 5. The next slide shows the same thing, except for the middle school. We have grades 6, 7, and 8. Again, grades 6, we performed very high. Number 4, above Barrington, Jamestown, North Smithfield, we were 57% of our students were proficient. Grade 7, 47.7, and grade 8, 51.3. So just so we can kind of look at our curriculum at the grade level to see if there are any gaps, if we need to make any changes or adjustments, we like to go in and look at the data by grade level. So here's ELA. The next two slides show grades 3 through 8. Again, like Kathy said, examining data in this way allows us to see how our grade levels are performing compared to other districts, and then taking a look at that compared to Cumberland as a whole. So grades 4 through 8 are performing top 10 compared to other districts. Grade 3 is performing, they're ranking 17th.
Grade three is performing, they're ranking 17th. This actually reflects two years of implementing new curriculum. We'll talk about that in a couple of slides. We've implemented a lot of new curriculum, including ELA. So grades three and four, this represents two years of implementing brand-new curriculum. Grades five through eight, this represents one year of new curriculum in ELA. If you want to go to the next slide, you'll see grades six and seven, they're outperforming districts that outperform us overall, those districts that are highlighted in yellow. As Kathy said, we like to look at data through different lenses. And what this has helped us to do at the elementary level is, I'm meeting with the elementary coaches, and we're taking a look at our curriculum. And we're working on making adjustments in order to have better outcomes.
So this slide talks about, this kind of combines math and ELA, so we'll both talk about this slide. It talks about how do we, what are the next steps? How do we improve student outcomes? We never just say, oh, yeah, we're doing a good job, everything stays the same status quo. Some things are out of our control, like new curriculum, RICAS regulations. We had to implement high-quality instructional materials at the elementary school in ELA and math, and at the middle school, all subject areas. So that's a bit of a challenge. In math, we have reveal math in grades six to 12. This is our third year at the middle school, second year at the high school. And this is our very first year. We've always used Eureka, but now we're implementing Eureka Math Squared. It's very similar, it still has the consistent, you know, models, rigor, and coherence, but it also has a lot of digital interactives, which have been really helpful for teachers. A lot of increased opportunities for student discourse, which is very important. And it's the, seems more engaging for students. So it's the same solid foundation that they got before, with some improvements. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So Wonders is new in terms of grades three through five. As I said, grades three and four implement, this is year two of, actually, this is year three of implementation. This is year two for grade five Wonders. The middle school, this is year two of implementing StudySync. In, for social studies, we're piloting a new social studies curriculum. So that's a lot of work. Great work, but a lot of work. I'm kind of hopping over to some of our challenges. You know, implementing this much, the rate at which we're implementing this new curriculum is a lot.
We also implemented a new science curriculum this year. Forgot to add that, sorry.
And health, as well. It's a lot to keep up with. In some cases, we wouldn't have chosen to do so, but RICAS, you know, we have to follow RICAS regulations, at the rate of which, you know, they've ruled this out for us, has been a little bit of a challenge for us. But I do think that we're doing, you know, there's always room for improvement, but we are doing a great job. Do you want to talk about some of the supports?
Sure. So some of the things we've done, so, you know, to help us continue to help students grow and show improvement, this year, there was a grant opportunity, often through RICAS, that Bethany and I, and our Shannon Basette, the math coach, worked on. And we were able to have two new coaches, a math coach at the middle school and an ELA coach, an additional ELA coach at the elementary school, to support teachers. The next thing you see is, this is something we've done for a long time, and it kind of goes back to that left-hand slide, analyze, revise, refine. That's something that we do all the time. And that work is done through our office with the help of teachers. So mapping sessions are when teachers from each building come together as a grade level. So say, grade four, one teacher from each school comes, and we work together as a team to see where we can make changes to our curriculum. We look at assessments, we calibrate to make sure we're scoring the same. We react to data. If we're not doing well, say, in math and geometry, as well as we're doing in numbers and operations, we look at our geometry curriculum. So we're constantly analyzing data, revising curriculum, refining curriculum, with the input of classroom teachers and often building administrators. So the coaches, the mapping sessions. MTSS is multiple, multi-tiered systems of support. That's our tier-two and three students, who are not proficient in what we're doing to support them. The next thing is CPT, which anyone who was on the committee the past few years knows that that was a missing piece last year. So this system only works if those teachers that come and meet with us then go back to their buildings and disseminate that information with their grade-level teams. If that doesn't happen, there's a breakdown. It's great that that one person comes, but when they're back in the building, they're in front of students teaching. So that time is key for them to go over the changes we've made to the curriculum or assessments in, you know, so it completes the whole process. Without that, there's a missing piece. Do you want to talk about essentials?
Sure. So we have, one of the new things that we have this year is, we have, I guess I'll hop back and forth between challenges. So one of the challenges that we faced is, over the past four years, we've had a high attrition rate. We've had 29% attrition rate, which means we've had a lot of brand-new teachers. And so one of the missing things that, that we, one of the missing pieces was mentoring. So we now have mentoring, where there's a building person in their building, not necessarily their grade-level colleague, but someone that they can go to and, you know, solve problems, or, hey, I need help with this. So we have mentoring. So that's helping with our attrition rate. Hopping back to supports, we have an essentials program at the middle school level. We have math and ELA. So it's an extra class for those students that need targeted support in math and ELA. It has its own curriculum. And so we're supporting students that need extra support in both math and ELA. We do have an ELA Essentials coach for the ELA class. She leads the curriculum work, she supports essentials teachers. We have had a high turnover of new teachers in the, in ELA Essentials, so that's been kind of tricky, where there hasn't been consistency. But having an ELA Essentials coach really, really helps with that. One of our other challenges that we face was, we've had limited building-based PD. Although students have been, you know, off while we're working in the buildings for the past three years, we've been working on the right-to-read. So a lot of our teachers have been working on fulfilling that requirement. So that meant that our office couldn't work on the stuff that we need to work on with the teachers. But that's over now. Everyone's worked on their right-to-read mandate. So we're now able to plan building-based PDs, which is really, really great. Did I miss anything?
Okay. So the next couple of slides are looking at Massachusetts. And the only reason we do that is because we often hear Massachusetts has the number-one education department in the country. And we happen to adopt Massachusetts State Assessment. They call it MCAS, we call it RICAS, but it's the same exact assessment. And when you look, you know, when the media comes out, and Rhode Island scores come out, they always say, you know, Rhode Island, Massachusetts is outperforming Rhode Island. But here in, you know, Cumberland, we're pretty competitive. So on this slide, we just took all of the bordering towns, every town that borders Rhode Island in Massachusetts. We looked at the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged, and then the percent proficient in ELA and math from 2021 to 2024. You can see in 2024, there were only two districts that performed better than Cumberland, and that was Renham and Franklin. You might also notice, Renham has 14% economically disadvantaged, and Franklin has 16, Cumberland has 21. You can also see with the bold numbers that this is, you know, over the years, that we've been outperforming more and more districts. So we really are, you know, we're in Rhode Island, but we are competitive with Massachusetts.
This is just another lens. So our neighboring mass districts with similar socioeconomic percent low-income students. So you can see how Foxborough, Seconk, Dayton, Rehoboth, and Millis have similar SES. However, we're outperforming them, which is a positive.
And then this is overall. We took every single LEA in Massachusetts, and we plotted Cumberland. And if you look at that, Cumberland performed better than 75% of Massachusetts districts in math. We, 2% performed the same as Cumberland, and 23% of mass districts performed better than Cumberland.
73%, Cumberland performed better than 73% of Massachusetts districts on the ELA portion of RICAS. We performed 1%, same as 1% of LEAs in mass. And then, that's hard to read, 26, we, 26 LEAs outperformed us.
The other slide you can just look at quickly. It's just to kind of tell you, you know, we don't just look overall at proficiency. We dig a lot deeper. We spend a lot of time looking at our subgroups. And I think that was one of the challenges on that slide. Some of our schools have a larger percentage of subgroups, or a larger percentage of students in those subgroups than others. So we are looking at the students that are English learners, or students with disabilities, and making changes and working with the MLL coordinator, the special ed director, and people who work on that team, economically disadvantaged. So this is just, you know, we do look at those students, and if you look at, there's one thing we always like to kind of point out, if you look at the recently exited English learners, they actually outperform the non-English learners. So even though it looks like they're performing at a lower level, when they do exit, they've mastered, you know, they've learned the language, they're actually outperforming. So I think that's a success. Yeah. The next one is ELA.
Same for ELA. We take a look at the different subgroups, and our recently exited English learners outperform our English-only students.
Okay, so we're almost done. BVP comparison. The reason why this remains something that we look at is because this was a very hot topic some years back, when BVP came into Cumberland, and they were performing better than the Cumberland School Department was in both math and ELA. And so the school committee members at that time wanted us to dive into the information and provide that information to the public. And so we've just continued to do that. And so the bar graph is, represents Cumberland's performance, and the line graph represents BVP's performance over time. So as you can just very simply see, back in 2015, BVP was outperforming us. They were close to 50% proficient, and we were around 36, 37% proficient in math. And so two years running, they were outperforming us. And then from 2017 on, we've taken over. And most recently, in 2024, they're around, they're hovering around, I think, 24, 25% proficient in math. And so, you know, we more than doubled their performance. So when we started to see a performance trend change, one of the arguments that arose was, well, BVP, we do better in subgroups than you guys do. We do better at, you know, teaching students of diversity better than you guys do. We do better in these other categories. And so the past two years, it's been a clean sweep, where we outperformed BVP in all the subgroups in math, and I believe the same is true in ELA. We'll see that in a slide or two. So this is just the equivalent ELA. Again, bar graph versus line graph. Same story, 2015, 2016, ELA, yep, thanks, Mike. Same story, 2015, 2016, ELA was outperforming Cumberland overall. And now you see the same, the same trend, where we're steadily doing well. Once again, subgroup comparison, and Cumberland is in ELA, outperforming, our subgroups are outperforming BVPs. So this next slide, you taking this one, Kathy?
So this slide, the past few years are kind of focused on what we call tier-two. Anyone who's been on the committee knows that in the past few years, we've added what we call essentials teachers, and Bethany explained that a little bit. But we also have tier-two at the elementary level. At the elementary level, students have 90 minutes a day of math, so 60 minutes is core, and then 30 minutes is that intervention period, where we respond to the needs of these tier-two students, to help them close gaps, so they can meet proficiency. So as you can see, we look at the kids that are partially proficient, that number-two category that Mr. Demana showed you, and how many students. And we try to make sure that we're addressing those students' needs. Like I said, at the middle school, it's through an essentials course. And at the elementary, it's from the classroom teacher. Ideally, we'd like that number below 30%, ideally lower than that. But that's, you know, we're always trying to make changes. I talked a little bit about MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. That's happening frequently, where teachers are meeting with principals, they're looking at data, they're making decisions, they're providing interventions for students. And this goes on in math and ELA. So again, ideally, this number would continue to go down. This year, it did go up. And we're always asking why, and what's next, and what else can we do for these students? So we pay attention to this data. Again, sometimes, you know, some of our students that we're not meeting move up to a two, which is a good thing. We want to see all kids improving. So we also look at growth. But that's just another piece of the puzzle.
So here's our ELA data for tier-two. As Kathy mentioned, when our partially proficient population is around 30%, we know that our systems are working really well. Right now, we're at about, I think I calculated, about 37-ish in ELA. Oh, you have it. Oh, there it is. That's why I do ELA and not math. So like I said before, we're in year two of implementation of Wonders in grades three, three and four, the first year, sorry, third year for grades three and four, second year, grade five. So I know that principals are really working on making sure that small groups are really up and running now, now that the teachers have core pretty much under their belt. And then we just continue the work at the middle school level with our essentials.
There's actually one more slide before questions. And yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna read this slide to you, but basically, you know, primarily in January, you're gonna start to hear conversations from RICAS or in the media about accountability and school district report cards, school report cards. And basically, all of this information that we're sharing with you, subgroups, student performance in math in ELA, they've added science, all of this funnels into algorithms that RICAS puts together, and they spit out a report card star rating for schools and districts. And so that's right around the corner. I actually, I'm having RICAS come out in the middle of January. They're going to give us basically our own overview of our own accountability data. And we have an opportunity to kind of talk about, you know, schools that, you know, want to chase that blue ribbon status, or schools that really want to improve in certain, you know, subgroups. They can give us tips on, typically, we pretty much know where we are, but we want to make sure that we're on the same page with RICAS in terms of how they're thinking about data, and is it equivalent to how we think about the data. So they'll be coming in mid-January, which we're happy about. So that's all I have to say about accountability. Now, if there are any questions for us or the team, I know it's a lot of information.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton?
I have a comment and a question. The comment is, no other district in Rhode Island, except Cumberland, has had three blue ribbons since 2015, I believe. It's truly a testament to all the teachers and all the work you all do. So just fantastic work. The question is, with accountability, a little teaser, I know we always talk about this, Tony, some districts, the accountability task is like a 100-yard dash with hurdles. Some districts have 10 hurdles, some have four or five hurdles, and they're measured on the same, same scale. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So as simply as I can put it, what Dr. Thornton is referring to is, there are districts that have, let's say, a high population of MLL students, multilingual learners, right? Once you reach a certain threshold, I think it's over 20 students or whatever, they start to look at and pull in that data and have it count against, or count within the algorithm of how they measure a district's performance. A town like Barrington may not have, does not have necessarily the subgroups that are getting pulled in. They don't have enough of those students that meet that criteria to be pulled into their, into their data. And so you see inner-city districts, districts like Central Falls, Pawtucket, Providence, bigger districts, Cumberland, Warwick, you know, North Providence, North Kingstown. When you start to see economically disadvantaged go up, then you know that you're pulling in larger groups of kids. And so that starts to impact your data. And so that starts to impact your data a lot and your report card.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Kathy brought up a good point. So, and not only that, but they don't take like an average, in other words, they don't take all the schools, average out their star scores and then rate Cumberland. Your lowest score becomes your star rating overall, which is even, you know, worse. It just, it compounds what Dr. Thornton was talking about, it makes the problem worse.
Building blocks model correct?
Thank you. That was one of my questions was just what you just said, and that was good. The other one is, could you please send this to the school committee? So it was a little bit more difficult to see and follow it on the screen, so if we have it in front of us, then we'll possibly have questions in the future.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Well, I just want to say thank you to you all for the great presentation, all your hard work that went into the presentation, and to the district for continuing to do well. Honestly, we're at the top of the heap, so a huge testament to you all, to the teachers, to the powers, to everyone in the school district. So a huge thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, the fiscal subcommittee did meet earlier tonight. It was our first meeting since the election, so it was a very good learning process for, for some of us and going through a lot of the information. Mr. McGrath did let us know that they are finishing up the audit and the finance on that should be completed hopefully by December 31st. So a lot of work's been going in at that time. Chartwell's also attended our meeting tonight and gave us an update on how they are doing and what they're seeing with all of the products that they've been offering. They did have the open house testing last week and the rotisserie chicken is up and active. They're going to be having that one to two times a week now, that'll be out there. The pizza, where they're making their own pizza dough, that's going to be out in the high school, they said, at least once or twice a week. They're going to be rolling it also, or once a week. And they're going to be rolling it also out to the middle schools. And I think I just said it wrong, they're going to be in the high school every day for pizza. And then they're going to be rolling out to the middle schools and others. So they're looking at ways that they can freeze the dough, get it all set, ship it out to the other schools so they can take advantage of some of these things as well. He did also let us know that the pasta, the fresh pasta making, did not go over as well because the product that they're using is a little bit of a darker color and, you know, people eat with their eyes and people weren't looking at it in a pleasing way. So they're looking at solutions for that. But the numbers from Chartwell, students continue to get the lunch. We've had a lot of, a lot more activity this year with people buying it. The deli sandwiches have been slower at the high school and they moved the soup over towards the deli high school, the deli sandwiches. It picked up a little, but then they got a panini press and the numbers are going way up. So that's what we want to see, we want to make sure. And there's a look Mr. Dean mentioned tonight about looking at having some kind of advertising that's visible to the students where we can say, this is, you know, a lower calorie intake or this is a higher, you know, carb or protein, whatever it may be. So Chartwell's is looking into having that be visible to the students as well. Right now, it is, all the nutritional value is on the website with the menu, but this will actually have a visual for the students, so. We also have resolutions and payment of the bills to do afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee update, Ms. Feather is not in attendance this evening. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update, Ms. Shea?
We did not meet, we're actually scheduled to meet early next year.
Thank you. And District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update, Ms. Shea?
Also the same, due to schedule to meet next month.
Great, thank you so much. Comments from the public, are there any comments from the public? Okay, we will move on to new business. Discussion and our vote to approve the 2025 Cumberland School Committee schedule. It was on the drive. Does anyone have any questions on the Cumberland School Committee schedule? If there are no questions, excuse me, can I have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Goldstein, second? Second by Mr. Bacon. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. We will now move on to the discussion and our vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2024, 2025 school year. Can I have a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Smith. Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discuss, Ms. Smith, discussion and our vote to approve resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 13 resolutions tonight. All 13 did pass the fiscal subcommittee earlier in the evening, three to zero. I just wanted to point out a couple of the resolutions for you first. If you look at SCPR 12 2023, and yes, that is 2023, with number 186, that is a revision. So we had gone out and purchased four vehicles and three of the four have been delivered. The fourth one, we've been waiting, we've been waiting, we've been waiting, the dealer finally says, you're probably not going to get it. So Mr. McGrath and the team negotiated with the dealer to get one off of the lot. And in doing so, the shelving and storage that they needed inside of those vans was also, or inside the truck, was already built into this one. So we were able to secure a deal for it. It cost us a little bit more than what was originally proposed and passed on the original resolution, but it's a savings in the end because it's going to cost us less because we don't have to do that equipment. So that is number 186. The second one, SCPR 08 2024 130, is also a revised resolution that was passed in the past already. And when the party that was given the contract came in and was looking and going through things, they realized there were things that they did not include in their scope. So we had to go back out, we look, we had another company that did put everything that we needed into the scope and it was actually cheaper. So while this was already approved, we have revised it now to put the lower bid and also the new party in, that's going to be contracting it inside of it. So that was it for those two. So I would like to move passage on all 13 resolutions noted.
Ms. Smith moves passages for all 13 resolutions, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
Okay, next up is the payment of the bills. And tonight, we did have payment of the bills in the fiscal subcommittee meeting and it passed three-zero in the amount of $1,391,492.04. And I would move passage.
Ms. Smith moves passage to payment of the bills, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dean, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Now we move on to school committee comments. Do we have any comments from the school committee? Yes, Ms. Smith.
I just wanted to congratulate Evan Spencer with our Cumberland football team. I'm not sure if anyone's seen this or not. He has been named the Gatorade Rhode Island High School Football Player of the Year. It's been a very, very long time since Cumberland's had one of those. And he also received another award, if I can get this one straight, I don't want to mess it up, besides being all-division, two-time all-state, division-back of the year by the Providence Gridiron Club. So congratulations to Evan. He did great things for us on our football team and we're really proud of him.
Excellent, thank you so much. Any other comments? I just want to wish everyone a happy and healthy start to the 2025. And with that being said, Dr. Thornton, do we need to go back into executive session?
No, we're all set.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Bacon? Second by Ms. Smith, all in favor? Aye, that carries six to zero. We will adjourn today, December 12, 2024, 8:05 PM. Thank you for attending.